I think it's true.
I don't like this.
You twisted each other.
Yeah, you twisted me.
You laughed at me more times. You see what's gonna happen.
True.
I just want you to know, let you feel my silly eye stare behind me.
In the backyard.
Don't text me when I'm saying.
Now you're involved.
Is that again?
He's always pretty.
I'm gonna see you. I'm gonna be here for math. Oh, Micah, roll by. Same as the come on. You shut this up.
I was like.
I guarantee you, Bart, call me. It's, I wanna be in the picture.
I wanna be in the picture.
No, I am on fire. I got a lot of kind of a really journal. It's all been corrected back. And then you're on some bull, there's some bull that is wrong.
There it is.
Larry. Sure.
From the classroom. Yeah.
That's your favorite.
Yeah.
Not the jam with her.
No. Let me just.
Hey. This one was.
It's because it's like. Well, it's on Facebook. I haven't traveled.
And you don't know.
Very much, man.
Yeah.
He doesn't say God is the reason why.
Learning stuff again.
Somebody might.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We're learning stuff again.
Yeah, that's all we did.
Yeah. There was an email. I guess the guy.
Yeah.
Nineteen. Was that we had. Do you agree with me here?
There wasn't a picture of what.
Oh, yeah.
I was. So anyway, yes, I can do six, six.
So. Then I would be just now.
At least for applications.
I don't want to be.
No, no, no.
No, it's a four month. There's the, I don't know what that is. All my experience. I don't know.
That's right.
It's the same thing as probably.
And.
I guess they're.
So you say you don't leave my home. If that's more important than my insurance or. No, it's not anyone's, I know it.
Right.
Yeah.
He don't like to.
Mine?
Of course you did.
What did you do? That's a whole thing.
Yeah. Especially with the K dot. The whole thing. And so we're setting this up to do the whole thing.
No, 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 this is just intersection.
It almost all. It's just here. And I've got a, a fatro, a fatro sketch. I'm basically sending that picture right now.
I see a picture.
Yeah.
That was what I was like. Might have touched you almost.
I mean, it was close. Yes. We worked it.
Okay, so this is what. I think it really comes with that. And that's gonna go this way. But that ways. To have. Cause it took two. But then is there a turn? Here. Okay. And then there's nothing. And here. A left turn, a right turn. And a circle. Or it's gonna be south, northbound.
Left lane where?
We can.
It's gonna be a left turn through lane and right turn southbound.
Call me in order. Welcome back, please stand for the pledge allegiance. And invocation led by Council President Hunter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and wisdom. We pray to you to seek peace and prosperity for the city that we love. We pray in hopes that you will give the governing body and the city staff the wisdom that it takes to make wise decisions for our community and the people up there. Please, God, give us the tools that it takes to best serve you. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, guys. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody back. It's good to see everybody in person. It's, it's like we got a house calling, but you're setting apart. Item C approval of the agenda. Do you have a chance to look over the agenda? Any questions? If not, look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Sound motion.
Good by Sarah. Second. Second by hundred. Are all those in favor of I?
Aye.
On opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, I have any citizens comments? Well, I hope you've all got something to say. We wanna hear from you. So, guys have anything to say? Please limit to three minutes. State your name and address. And come on to discuss with what you'd like to. Come on up. Good to see you again, those.
Thank you.
Dress well in. Home and business address or home address?
Um, your business address is fine.
One nine eight nine four West Kellogg Drive here in Goddard. Just called to seek some, maybe a progress update as to where we're at with some signage ordinances that we were, a lot of those business owners had signed a petition. We created that. Took less than four hours to garner what forty, fifty signatures to pretty, pretty clear stance of, we're not impressed. We're not on board with the signage ordinance that has been put forth. Many of us hadn't even had the opportunity to have input on that when it was created because it predated a lot of us. Either way, whether it did or did not, that signage as it is is a necessary part of our business. Mr. Mayor, would you sell a home without a sign sitting out front?
It'd be tougher, yeah.
That'd be pretty tough, wouldn't it? You get my point?
Yeah.
We, we'd like to understand what that progress is and what direction we're going with that. Do we need to have additional discussion outside of this body? Or get some more feedback? Or we wanna partner with you, as we said before. I will restate that. But at the same time, we, we see things out there that have changed. And those are dramatic expenses for every Goddard business that we deem as business owners, the ones writing the checks, creating jobs in this community that are unnecessary. There's other ways and we'd like to learn where we're going.
Okay.
Have you realized that that's been on the books for over five years? And we've given all the businesses of Goddard over five years?
Well, I've been here, sir.
I'm Larry Zimmerman.
Mr. Zimmerman, I've been here three years.
But this has been on our books for over five years as far as the signage ordinance. And we've given all of the people opportunities to lay backs and money trying to accommodate this. But apparently nobody has. And now it's coming up on the deadline. And now everybody wants to panic and wants to change the ordinance.
That's correct. We're not panicking. We are business people and we want to get that.
We've given five years for people to do this. Now. According to the planning commission, we're trying to beautify the city and not having a bunch of blinking lights on, on, on Kellogg Avenue to detract from the things that we're trying to create as far as a nice aesthetic run through Goddard. And we're not saying don't go without a sign. We're just saying we need to have it in a certain place and a certain way.
We have no problems with that. And when I say we, I do represent a lot of business owners. I've given that authority. We need to have more in-depth understanding on both sides. I, I don't feel a sense of collaboration. Regardless of when this started, we need to see it go in a different direction than where we're at now. We're not, we're not feeling the love from, from the city of Goddard. What we're feeling is a sense of, of a victorial state, if you will. And something, and an enormous expense. It makes it very difficult to, to run a business if people can't find your business at the end of the day. So we want, we want to be heard. We, we want to collaborate again. Again, I say collaborate versus react.
Right.
What is it that we can do to further that, that discussion? And grow Goddard in a responsible, professional, aesthetically pleasing way? Do you think that there are ways to do that? What say you?
I think we have progress, Larry, on some developments like the Goddard Galleria with wiring businesses that have monument signs. But Wise Businessman told me that small businesses are ran very similar to households. One paycheck goes to the mortgage or rent. The other paycheck will go to keeping lights on, insurance, utilities, different things like that. About fifteen percent goes maybe to savings. If not, something extra comes out. Businesses, whether you give them five years or ten years or twenty years, they don't have a whole lot to be dishing out for extra expenses like a large monument sign. Now, but we have made progress with other developments such as the Goddard Galleria that's mandating an order. And, but that's for certain private developments. I appreciate everything you've achieved over the past.
Now, and what is it, Micah? So just to recap, so twenty twenty-one was forcing businesses to go to monument signs. Is that correct?
Yeah, so from what I understand, originally this sign ordinances were, were pretty loose originally speaking. And then in twenty fifteen, they got revised. And they, there was an amortization process by twenty twenty-one in December that all pole signs basically had to be converted to monument signs. And I think at one point, the city was willing to front a certain portion of the funding for that transition. And then I came along in December in twenty eighteen. And then I rewrote the sign ordinance as sort of based on merit-based process. You know, kind of there's each sign kind of given certain qualifications, et cetera. That was originally, and when it was presented before the planning commission, they didn't like it. And so they, we, we backed it. And we brought in Cindy Proit, Ruma's Neon. She gave a long, elaborate explanation of all the laws and precedents and everything else that have to assign regulations. And so I was drafted to sort of go back and go through a kind of a more rigorous process of bringing about a sign ordinance that was sort of able to both the city and its long-term vision and both the business owners. And so I'm sort of in that middle ground trying to figure out how to do that. I'm, well, I do wanna collaborate with business owners and as well as meeting the long-term vision of the city. So that's kind of where we're at.
And I know that was voted on when I was not here. And I remember the conversation with Steve Schiffer about that park, that industrial park. He didn't wanna upgrade the sign. And I gave the directive to get rid of the ordinance. So that's my directive, but I need you guys' vote on it. I don't feel like a government. And when you've got forty-seven businesses, like you said, signing a petition, not wanting to be forced to upgrade their sign, I think we need to take action. I don't know if it's just in the planning commission or we should take the action to just revert to the old signage. That'd be up for you guys and put on further agenda. But I appreciate you bringing it up.
There's a problem with that. When you do that and you give half the city leeway, then all of a sudden the new businesses that come in are gonna feel discriminated against by them having to follow the new signage on a monument. So you're gonna be back to square one with everybody putting up whatever they want.
There's still allowed exceptions, just like Brahms was with their, with the big cum group sign. I mean, they're giving a cute sign. So it kind of invalidates the whole thing by approving more exceptions. But I like the idea of giving exceptions if we're gonna make more stringent rules on new signs and still even allow them for exceptions. Cause sometimes if the business is gonna mend, if they've done too expensive a sign, it might not be feasible. That's where I don't think the government fits in with private businesses. But I, like I said, we can put this on the agenda and vote for it later. But I appreciate you bringing it up. I don't think we'll get any resolve tonight. But I think definitely, if you guys are on board, I'd like to see it on the agenda, bring back that again. I don't know if we wanna wait for the planning commission to do it again and do that. Cause I know you've written a couple drafts, but I think.
We have passed it before the planning commission. Because if it comes an amendment of subdivision regulations, the planning commission has to approve it first and then it has to go before the governing body.
Okay.
So that's, it has to go before the commission first. And your, the governing body has the power to veto it. But the planning commission ultimately has to approve it first. It has a subdivision amendment. And this actually stays a long.
Okay. Well, we'll sort further around with her and I'll follow back. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. You appreciate it. Anybody else? Don't be shy. Come on up.
My name is Garth Height. I live at two thirteen West Olive Ways. And I've wondered if we could look at improving the, the asphalt paving from the highway onto Harper Street? Cause there's so puddles in that paper right there. I just wonder if we could improve that. And where else to.
Are you talking on Kellogg or on?
Again, I had to pull off of Kellogg onto Harper Street. Yeah. That asphalt.
I know we're getting ready to some street rehab and puddle doing, so make sure.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And then also, is it possible to add some sidewalks onto or next to the front of the roads? On what side of Kellogg and South Side?
I think it's possible. I think we've just gotta get it in the budget and the plan. I mean, I think for this next year, they're gonna be redoing, you know, or twenty twenty-two, we're doing a lot of the frontage with the new arc that come in. But I think it's very possible and then we've got other neighborhood coming behind you that would connect that as well too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the time. Anybody else? No, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Thank you, guys. Uh, item H approval, we consent to give that. Do you have a chance to look at the minutes and the accounts available? Any questions? Look for a motion to approve, consider agenda. Motion to approve. Motion by hundred. Second. Second by Michael. Always in favor of I?
Aye.
On opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item H, new business.
I'm the mayor of City Council. This is item H one, it's a community development block grant. As you remember, just kind of quick background. The Housing and Urban Development HUD Department of Federal Government has released a special fund for community development block grants. Cities with population less than fifty thousand can apply for this grant money on a first-time, first-serve basis. Cities can only be awarded three hundred thousand dollars in the maximum. Prior to applying for the grant, it's a council public meeting, which is happening right now, uh, which is published in the city newspaper, which it was. Seven days prior, she considered viability of applying for grant money. This is sort of an open conversation. We haven't applied for it yet. On May eighteenth of twenty twenty, the upper body voted down so the published necessary meeting requirements for considering applying for the CBDGCP grant. The public notice was placed in time, so on May twenty-first. There are four forms that are included in the agenda packet. You're all welcome to review some, all of them are, you know, particular. And feel free to ask me any questions about them if you so desire. The same of insurances and certifications, kind of agreed overview all these. This form is to show that all necessary state federal laws will be abided by in the application and execution of grant money should we decide to apply for it. The HUD disclosure form, this form is required by the Federal Housing and Urban Development HUD Department for Tracking Advocants Who Request Federal Funding. Anti-displacement, this form is confirmed funds not to be used towards demolition or replacement of low to moderate income housing units. And a resolution, this form is confirmed of the governing body of municipality requesting funds has the authority and desire to do so. So some of these forms are obviously not applicable, but they are required. So we have to go about it anyway. And so items. There was a cost social publisher, the notice in this newspaper, and legally it was approved as a form. As you can see, everything that's included in the agenda packet came straight from Kansas Department of Commerce. So this is just downloading, they've given it to you guys to review them. The mayor consigned it. If you guys agree that we wanna apply, then of course, that's Perry Lamont, City Clerk, about signing as well. This is recommended that City Council, direct staff, if desired. We're not gonna say which way you guys want us to go, obviously. If you decide you wanna apply for the grant, you may make a voice vote and go forward. If not, we can just table it and terminate it or however we wanna proceed. If you do desire to proceed and you would grant the mayor authority, and this would be what you would have to say in the voice vote, you would have granted mayor authority to submit the application to half of the city and designate city planner myself as primary point of contact of the city for the application administration of the community development block grant coronavirus and the city administrator as secondary, should I get my bus back, as necessary, behalf of the city. So that's kind of what you would have to do. Granting authority to the mayor to apply for it. I orchestrated. And if I become sick from coronavirus, then obviously Brian, city administrator, staffed on my behalf and have to unimportant succeed. So this is open to conversation. Questions?
Is there anybody inquiring about it?
I think we've had one inquiry. We went directly to Brian, so I don't know who exactly it was. We do, we did have tech to reach out about it, but that was directly as a result of the, payroll protection plan. So this might not apply to them. There's a lot of stipulations, very stringent federal stipulations that we'd have to abide by to vet every business application as it comes forward. So they have to meet certain low to moderate income requirements and certain full-time equivalent requirements of employees. So there's quite a bit that goes into it.
How will we get word out to apply and how will the.
If you decide that you guys wanna apply, move forward. Then we would go ahead and apply for it first. Since it's first come, first served, then first we have to make it. Once we apply for it, Kansas Department of Commerce will let us know if we get anything. Right? Once they decide, hey, you've been awarded such amount of money or zero money, depending on what it is, we would then do a publication. I believe we work with patro, we do a social media post. We say, hey, if you want to, you may now go ahead and submit an application to see if you qualify to have some of your expenses reimbursed through the community development block.
So did they send you their payroll to try to justify how much they're asking for?
Yeah, that's a very good question. So basically what they would have to do is they would have to first fill out the application and then they would also have to include the expenses and income of their employees. And so not only their employees, but the families of employees would have to also submit sort of general information about their income to make sure that they meet certain income requirements that's set by federal law. There's no tax returns. We don't have to verify that income. It's just based on employees, the employees have filled out the forms. They would give it to their boss. Their boss would then submit it to us. We would vet it and let them know if they're eligible or not. And that's how we move forward.
There's only three hundred thousand available at tops, right, for us?
If we get three hundred thousand, yes, we could ultimately, they could, the Kansas Department of Commerce could give us a hundred thousand or even fifty thousand. It just totally depends on them. We would submit the application as soon as possible. Of course, if you decide to move forward, we would move forward expeditionally applying for us.
Is there a time period on how soon they need to use that funds?
Correct, yeah, that's a very good question. Ninety days. We have ninety days to pay down. Assuming we got three hundred thousand dollars, we'd have ninety days to pay it down. We don't get penalized if we don't. It just gets deauthorized and we go back into the general fund that Kansas Department of Commerce has. So no fines, no penalties for not spending all of what we are allotted just because we're authorized. We have ninety days.
What about when you issue it to the business? So like with PPP loan, they have to use it within eight weeks. Is there any?
No, businesses would be submitting receipts. And so they've already paid for the receipts. We then, we would then submit to Kansas Department of Commerce and say this is reimbursement. The Department of Commerce would give us the money, it would go into our bank account. We would write the business a check.
Could it be used for a sign?
It's a good question. I'd have to check. There is a lot of things it can be used for and an equal amount of things cannot be used for. So.
Forty seven patients. So basically, the city's not incurring any financial costs or anything. Basically, it's just your legwork that.
Yes. Yeah, the cost that's being put on city would simply be the administrative, administrative grant. It'd be difficult to prove a sign, you know, it would be an effect of the coronavirus. So I think that would be a stipulation. Well, any other questions? Mark, someone wanna read that?
I'd like to motion to grant the mayor the authority to submit the application on behalf of the city and to designate the city planner as the primary point of contact of the city for the application and administration of the community development block grant coronavirus and the city administrator as a secondary representative to act as necessary on behalf of the city.
Second. Motion by Sarah, second by Brent. Voice vote.
Out of voice.
Yeah. Roll call?
Roll call or both?
Voice, yeah, roll. Yeah. Okay, roll call. Hundred.
I suppose voice.
Yeah, are you saying roll call or a voice vote, just I?
Just a voice vote.
Okay, yeah, always in favor of I?
I.
I. Opposed, same sign? Okay, carries, thank you. Thank you very much.
Item H to authorize offering for sale series twenty twenty oh two general obligation bonds, financing Starbond District infrastructure improvements.
So this is the, one of the original type notes that we issued for our, part of our competition to the Starbond project.
The road to somewhere.
The road to somewhere. And as well as the other infrastructure that went along with the road. We admitted this with the development agreement. We adopted President sixteen oh seven on present project, May two thousand sixteen, June seventeen sixteen. Initiated series twenty sixteen dash two, purchased seven hundred seventy thousand dollars with one point two one interest rate. Expired in July, then in July eighteen. May of eighteen, we approved, authorized the sale, second set of notes, which are the first, twenty eighteen dash two, dispositions for two years. Due twenty eighteen to cancel through resolution placing twenty eighteen dash two temporary note issuance for best offer commemorized back with an interest rate two point two percent. In May of this year, we authorized resolution twenty S L A authorizing offering sale replacement of bonds presented here. Twenty eighteen dash two debt notes on the terms on the first. So in the position, seven sixty thousand dollars, which includes capitalized interest costs in the original series twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen dash two divisions. Taking offers for private placement of our two A rating general obligation bonds amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Car amount of bonds, seven hundred eighty-four thirty-six, capitalized interest, twenty twenty to twenty-two, thirty-two thousand nine ninety-seven, and interest rate, total cost of thirty-three thousand five sixty-six. Interest rate from the lending bid was two point zero seven nine seven seven percent. Submit by first, bankers, bank securities incorporated with a net interest cost of two hundred forty thousand eight twenty-six fifty-eight. I'm grateful about it, I heard about that. Payments may occur with other geobonds. The payments will be made with our other geobonds in April, October. Terms twenty twenty to twenty twenty twenty-two, all after October one, twenty twenty-seven. This ordinance authorizes the sale issuance of bonds in the name of the mayor, city clerk, and chief of necessary documents, bill of directors, city council. Resolution sells the bonds addressed to the leaded action staff to implement the city council. Financial, twenty eighteen dash two general obligation bond payments will be made for the city bond interest fund, failure to approve the issuance or acquire payment of eight hundred and five thousand July first. I believe that's actually seven hundred sixty thousand, which is the amount.
That's where I'm getting confused. So we start at seven sixty.
So seven sixty was the amount of the original.
Right.
Amount of the refunding ten notes. The full bond. The full bond were issued now, includes those costs plus the interest costs and other.
Cost of issuance.
Cost of issuance.
So if we go down to the cost of issuance already, once, so that cost like thirty thousand dollars when we do that?
We had issuance costs of both, the general series, so. This was prepared by city bond council and approved as formal by city attorney. And separate with our instructions presented. For each other, we saw it all, and the city bond council probably have accounted for both years, if you have any questions for them.
I've got a question for you, just on the, on the eight thirty five, so we're borrowing eight thirty five, and we're going to have seven sixty, and they're going to take thirty, just say thirty five thousand of it, so that leaves forty thousand left, right? Where does that go? Do we borrow the pre-interest, are you prepaying it, or does it go in a general fund, or does it go with the tricked ones of bond?
Okay, it's not going to general fund.
Or wherever it is, yeah.
So. Hold up.
It goes to capitalized interest.
Right, but yes, there's capitalized interest of thirty three, almost thirty four thousand, and thirty, another almost thirty three thousand in issuance and other rates.
So does that go in the count, or are we prepaying it?
We're paying that, that's being included in the.
Okay, yes. That leaves, I'm unclear, does it prepay it in the, in the, right?
Yes, yeah, it all goes into the bonded interest fund, and then whenever those, whatever those first few interest payments are due, it'll be made out of capitalized interest. So you don't have to levy for that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And I'll clarify it a little bit further, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, man.
Those were the estimates before we sold the bonds. Those were based on the three and a quarter percent interest rate, since the true interest cost was only two oh eight, the capitalized interest is only twenty one thousand three hundred nine dollars.
So it's about fifteen thousand more, right?
And the cost of issuance is actually a little bit less, because we overestimated on that. So we were able to downsize the issue based on that, and the new issue is actually eight hundred thirty thousand. But we had great result. As you can see, your twenty-two-year bonds have a lower interest rate than your two-year ten thirty notes. So we had a, we had a great result. And we received four bids, four bids total on the, on the bonds. And first banker's bank was, was the best.
Any other questions? Four times, I don't understand it, so. So make a motion to have a waiver, either organs. Which my lady?
Second.
Second by Sarah, always a favor, I?
I.
I, vote same side? Make a motion to adopt your organs. Motion by Larry?
Second.
Second by Sarah, always a favor, roll call? Councilmember Larkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmerman? Councilmember Lehman?
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer?
Aye.
Councilmember Proctor?
Aye.
I believe that would be ordinance number eight five one. I'm not out of on the rule. In a minute. Thank you.
Hold on, I'm going to let Chief speak to you.
I'm going to let the rest of my staff hang in here for a second. I intended to do this at the end of the meeting, but I need to have a couple minutes just to talk to you guys.
Come on in, please.
Before we go meet individually, there's some things going on in the county right now that I want to talk to these guys about. And I had, I had prepared a statement that I wanted to read to you all, and hopefully the community, but mainly for you guys to have some understanding of where we're at, everything that's going on right now. Like all of you, I watched the events of the week unfold after a video appeared of Minneapolis police officers arresting George Floyd and his subsequent death as the officers held him down. The image of an officer with his knee on the neck of Mr. Floyd is burned into our memories, along with the pleas from Mr. Floyd that he could not breathe and left us wondering how this could happen in a modern society. I've avoided making strong judgments or opinions, because as disturbing as the video was to watch, I also believe that due process is one of the cornerstones of our society. I personally cannot comprehend how any human being, let alone a public servant, could become aware that another human being was in need of care and act with complete disregard and lack of basic human concern. My belief is that once facts are revealed and due process is carried out, those responsible will be held accountable. But if we do not pay attention to the history and learn from it, we're doomed to repeat it. My objective tonight, however, is not to wade into the discussions of what that particular agency did or did not do. My responsibility is to the citizens of Goddard, to direct the operations and practices of the Goddard Police Department. So tonight, I want to take this opportunity to reiterate our philosophies and practices for you. To serve and protect is not just a catchy slogan we put on our cars, it's a guiding principle and a constant reminder of why each of us puts on our uniform daily. We train and equip our officers with the tools and knowledge they need to carry out that mission daily, and we go well beyond the traditional police tools and tactics. Our officers are trained in CPR, the use of AED devices, and how to administer trauma care. Carry drugs historically carried by paramedics in order to respond to opioid overdoses. We train on how to respond to incidents of excited delirium, and how to recognize and differentiate between criminal offenses and medical crisis and act accordingly. My officers understand those differences in how to prioritize a medical crisis over any criminal offense and how to administer care. We spend a great deal of time teaching our officers how to communicate with people and to listen, a skill that seems to be a thing of the past these days. Tonight, the men and women behind me, along with some of their spouses, hopefully their spouses and that, maybe just the men and women behind me, are here because I want you to see them and know that they are your police department. They put on the uniform of the Goddard Police Department, adorned with our patch and badge each day, and are the face of our agency. They work to serve and protect this community because they chose to be here and met the standards we set for our officers. And they are here to show you and our citizens that is who we are. Our standards are high, training is a priority, and we hold each other accountable, from me down to the newest employee. Because that is what makes a truly professional organization, and that is our continued commitment to this community. No one doubts that change needs to occur, change in civil discourse, and the ability to differ in and respect others' opinions, the ability to accept and respect one another regardless of race, color, or creed, and change in how we police our communities. There have been great strides in my thirty years in law enforcement, which began at the height of the Rodney King riots. That incident began a much-needed change in nineteen ninety, and those young, and those young officers standing behind me will continue to see change and do great things for our profession. That change will not happen overnight, it begins in each of our respective communities as directed by those in leadership positions. The Goddard Police Department has committed that high standard of professionalism, compassion, and service. And I thank you for letting me jump in here and go to answering questions you have. I think it's important, though, that you all see these folks, you know, more than just in passing. This is a very difficult time in law enforcement. You know, we all collectively will pay for the sins of one or two people. It's unfortunate, you know, I'm happy that the city of Wichita and kind of the surrounding communities have managed to fend off some of that, at least for now. Some of the things that are going on that really aren't about peaceful protests, it's about just damaging property and ruining lives. You know, we're here to make sure that Goddard's taken care of, and we'll assist our, you know, brothers and sisters east of here if we need to, and that's what we're going to talk about, a little bit about tonight. I decided it was important to, to kind of make some kind of statement, and I don't usually do that, but this seemed like the right time to do it, so.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to say I do appreciate all of you guys, and men and women here serving Goddard in the chief. It does, gives us peace and a nice community, and I feel like everybody knows that Goddard is a big town, and that's because of you guys, so. I'd like to stand up and give you guys a big round of applause, thank you. I know some of us, myself included, will never know what it's like to risk my life for a job or something else, so I appreciate that, and I take it seriously, and I would again, thank you. Do you guys have anything else to say?
Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you guys. I'd make sure to draft a precondition development agreement. Our man in the city council. For background, I'm taking up this item from Brian, so lots of the administrator, mayor of the law requests the site replaced on agenda for March second, twenty twenty for the session. This is background, the city council directed statute draft, development agreement with city participation identified by improvements. An optic C dollar amount requested by the developer, staff met with developers on September fifth, twenty nineteen, discussed the possibility of the project. At this meeting, legislation was requested, although none is required. Staff also stated any activity or cost shared on the part of the city requires city council approval, but also incorporate adoption of the development agreement. That's a lot of small texts. Well, basically, that's, I think these are key points right here. Modification required for onsite stormwater sewer system is thirty eight thousand, cost of detention improvements, nine two thousand, cost of roundabout pavement, eighteen thousand, and five percent project cost at thirty percent would be forty one thousand seven forty nine. So these are just numbers that were drafted for the development agreement to be shared on behalf of the city, will help with the development at Rusty Creek. If you remember, Rusty Creek is a new development we have just north of Quikshot, off of one ninety ninth and Furnish Road. And so Adams, financials, costs related to the city represented above is detailed in the administrative report following March second, twenty twenty meeting directive. Finance will be through the issuance of a twenty-year debt service, assuming three percent interest on twenty-year bonds, required estimate annual cash flow, including estimate fees, fourteen thousand a year, developer of market homes ranging in value from two hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand. Four thirty-five lots to include the phase one, I believe they said there would be three phases. Using the two hundred thousand dollars mounted provided by Mr. Ralph, development agreement draft document contains a minimum house value of two hundred thousand. Using a fourteen thousand dollar annual debt service with base value of two hundred thousand requires twenty homes to cash flow the debt service on the current bill levy of thirty point three two three. This figure is three mils for library operation, and legal is proven as before. And it is recommended the city council consider the proposed agreement, and the whole agreement's included in the agenda packet.
I have a question on that. What is, what, maybe all that can help with that? How much would it be just a cost of requesting care of the storm sewer or stormwater drainage just off of, over there by Hopper and stuff? To take care of the stuff that should have been taken care of in the first place, without taking care of the roundabout and all the other drills that they want?
Well, I guess that's a little difficult to answer specifically, just for the drainage coming off Hopper Drive, is that what you'd be talking about?
Whatever drainage is on that development.
Within Autumn Blaze and Hopper? Well, I think that was one, one of the three parts that you quoted, the three, summarized the three costs, what was the first one, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Was it, because there was, there was three pieces of that, one of them was, was stormwater improvements necessary to handle the oversize due to that area. And then second was the oversizing of the detention due to that area, and the third was the roundabout. So I guess you could pull that roundabout out of cost, which was at what, eighteen, and then you look at the additional detention at ninety-three, so you'd be back to what, to thirty-eight? From what, I would just.
It says thirty, right, you're monitoring required to estimate.
Right, so I guess I would say thirty-eight thousand is directly attributable to the Hopper and Autumn Blaze West drainages that comes through this development.
So just basically thirty-eight thousand total?
Yeah, now, keeping in mind, again, that drainage area does require the detention area to be enlarged, because you have to capture that volume, store it, and then meter it out. So, I mean, in, in, in a similar manner, that, you know, that drainage has to be handled in the detention barn, so. There's some portion there that, I think that ninety-three thousand is what they're saying have estimated is, is due to that additional area as well, but I guess I can't speak to that exactly to know if that's for sure, but. They're saying the detention, the additional cost of the detention is the ninety-three thousand due to that area, I believe. So just to, just to convey the drainage through the thirty-eight, the ninety-three is a component of that as well.
So that's going to be a hundred and thirty thousand there?
Yes, yeah, a hundred and thirty.
And that's without the thirty percent project cost of thirty percent?
And again, I think, didn't we, didn't we discuss about this when this was an agenda item about if the city were to agree to something, it would be based upon actual bid costs once we receive them? These are the estimates, these are the estimates at this point in time.
So this is engineering estimates that the developer, you know, the developer, the rising developers, engineering firm, put together these estimates. So once, if we move forward approving it, then we would take it out for bids and then we'll receive that.
The developer's engineer, yes, we would advertise it for bids, and then the final cost would actually be based upon bid prices that were received, not only for these items, but, well, for, received for the entire project.
Well, and the ideology behind entering into this type of agreement was, so we avoided the circumstances with, that we just incurred with the other development, with the list station, oh, yeah, we'll pay for this, but then it came in four hundred percent higher, or whatever.
Yeah, but this just protects us, it's the maximum we're going to give it.
Saying, hey, this is what we're saying.
Yeah, I think, I think this was the maximum contribution you were going to make, but then it could be lower based upon what bid prices they actually received.
Were you finished, Mike, or did you solve this more? I think that's, it is, after that, it's our man in the city council that proposed the agreement. It'll be a voice vote if you want to.
I didn't know that, you know, from the past councils, you know, wanting to help developers and stuff like that, it puts them into a situation, trusting the developer was going to develop both ends of it, and then they, after they got what they wanted, they backed out and left us with a mess. So we need some type of agreement, but I'm not in agreement to pay for a roundabout, I mean, if the developer wants a roundabout, then he needs to put a roundabout in it, but I'm not in favor of paying for the roundabout for.
Okay, so do we have the motion for what the staff presented then?
Did I have my question?
I don't know, either you motion on it or not, or pick it apart, you guys decide, that's what I'm saying. No, Larry's not for it, with that, without that.
Is it a, is it a all or nothing, is it, we take it all or take out the roundabout, I mean, I guess.
Well, it's, yeah, should the city council direct changes to the proposed agreement? So if you guys don't agree on it and you want to propose some certain changes, staff will plan to present the development agreement incorporating the changes that you agree upon, at a later date being June fifteenth or July sixth, so. If you just feel like it needs to be amended, then the city staff will amend it and bring it, present it at the next meeting.
I just know it'd be nice to talk to some people in Autumn Blaze, too, because you're putting a safe access to get them out of one hundred and ninety, they don't have to play for all ground caliphate anymore. Plus, this developer's given a lot for future park ground for us, so I think he's working with us, but, and I approached him, and this is why he bought the land last year, saying that we can assist him, but it's up to you guys how much you want to give him, and he's not here, I don't know if you have questions for him, but whatever you guys want to do. But I think the roundabout's important, because I see all these other neighborhoods putting them in, and if we don't put the roundabout in, he's not going to put it in, and he doesn't care about people speeding along the road, so do we care about the citizens or the developer? That's what the roundabout says to me, because I wouldn't put it in if, you know, if I didn't want to, or, you know, was being any pinch on, I guess.
Well, my own, my own mindset, I mean, I don't want to help anybody make a development, but as far as the drainage concerns, but. Proctor, Trailer, I guess, what are your guys' opinions?
Yeah, thinking back on our discussion when we were talking about this, I couldn't remember if we had talked about funding. And I was kind of curious what the thirty percent project costs were, if we were going to fund all of the amount that it was going to take for that, or a portion of it.
I think what the project costs are, you typically, you, you put together a construction cost estimate on any petition costs, and then you, you add on typically a ten percent contingencies to cover things, then you have the engineering design, you have the construction inspection, you have some bond and interest costs. So those are.
So, uh, those are kind of, um, what do I wanna say? Overhead, overhead cost to the original construction cost to get this project designed and administered through construction. So, so again, those numbers are, um, could vary a little bit, uh, but, uh, that, that's what forty five thousand.
More than likely, the developer, they can manipulate those numbers any way they want, yeah, I mean.
Well, his engineer's the one that prepared these, based upon his, his best estimate of construction.
I mean, the way I see it, they're asking for a hundred and ninety three thousand or ninety four, it's gonna be that way no matter what, I think it's gonna be less.
Well, they, I think they'd have to, they'd have to justify the numbers to us, yeah, for, for the staff to see, sure.
Yeah, I, I just, I thought we'd talked maybe about seventy percent, I didn't know we were talking about a hundred percent, but. Or, or if that was even discussed. But I know we gave the directive to work up the agreement.
We can always meet them halfway. On the roundabout.
I think with.
I'm not opposed to that.
I think with our failure to follow through with reducing the speed limit to twenty, um, we need to not encourage creation of more straightaways where speed can be, um.
And granted, he is giving us a park ground, nobody in Goddard has ever given us a piece of land.
Just what you guys. I'm not sure we traded land.
No, that was too many good.
Not, not, not.
They was supposed to give us a parcel over there in, uh.
Who did?
Uh, Dugan was supposed to have given us a parcel over there.
Well, again, it's part of it for the, um, for the driveway, but then we had to pay fifty thousand dollars for the additional.
Dugan has given much more than that?
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, just give him free parkland, yeah. I was just talking about parkland, everybody in Goddard likes parkland, that's odd.
It was supposed to, it was supposed to. It was supposed to have had some parkland, don't they end up in Spring Hill, but then they turned around, renewed sold it on, sold to us.
Well, that's why we have a development agreement, to make sure we do.
And then if we need, if we need to slow people down, all we gotta do is put rubble strips out there and it's a lot cheaper than putting in a roundabout.
I don't wanna hear those. In the neighborhood, I don't know. What do you guys wanna do, table it? No, we should do something, I can't do anything. We gotta move on.
Well, I mean, my only concern, I've, I'm beating dead horse and I don't wanna do that, but my only concern is I don't wanna help with building developments, and I've expressed that to you guys. Um, but if, if that's okay with Trailer, that we, we go halfway, um. I don't, I don't know, I mean, uh, to me, I'm very wary of trying to participate in helping build the development. He should have that built into his costs, into selling the lots and homes, and that should be a part of his business plan. But as far as helping with the detention problems and the, everything else, that was almost created, correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, you put in.
That was created beforehand.
That was created beforehand, just by, by the, by the developer not living up to their end of what they said they were gonna do, and then pulling out and leaving us with a mess.
Yep, this, this area was actually plotted originally as Autumn Blaze, it was gonna be the next phase of Autumn Blaze.
Which went through bankruptcy.
That development went south, so unfortunately it just wasn't there to take care of us.
Okay. And he still, he doesn't have to do anything either, like, he just bought the land, I, that's what, that's what his idea was to.
Is this an all or nothing, since you're?
I, I don't know, he's not here, so I don't know, you have to ask him. I know that he put this together with staff, I was, I'm not doing this.
This is just my motion, but I'll motion to amend the development agreement for the, what is, what does that figure add up being the?
Now, we, if we, if we're gonna, if you're gonna motion anything except what's presented in this agreement, we'll have to table it.
We have the direct staff to.
We're gonna have to take it back before the developer and have a, you know, sit down.
Okay, well, I guess my question is, ask him if the roundabout is an all or nothing. Um, uh, cause I'm more willing to help with the hundred and thirty with the, the detention and everything else. But that's just me.
Yeah, I'm not wanting to do that, I mean, we can show you, we can show you rubble strips if that's, everybody's worried about speeders.
Rubble strips are not gonna slow speeders down.
You don't wanna do.
They're not gonna slow people down.
Do the, do the, take out the.
Oversizing.
Part, but just take the roundabout out.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree, I, I've, I've struggled with why the roundabout's in there myself, if it's a lot of drainage. Um, so I'd, I'd be for it, given all the background of the property minus the.
If anybody's come up on rubble strips and stops, I need to know that they slow down when they start hitting those rubble strips.
I just worry around them.
Okay, so are we gonna table it? I guess I vote to table it, too.
Do you move to table it?
Yeah.
Second by Larry, all those favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Which carries, thank you. Sarah, over we go.
I voted against it, I won't have that vote. I voted against it.
Item H four, KDOT agreement for one hundred and eighty third street frontage road discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, Harlem four, for City Engineer, and, uh, I'm gonna try to walk you through, uh, this amendment to the hundred and eighty third street, uh, frontage road application and new hundred and eighty third street intersection project. I've not been up here before, so let's see how I can affect it. Uh, and, and just in, in a brief nutshell, what it is, is that, uh, we had applied for a corridor management funds through KDOT and, uh, for the frontage road relocation project, uh, that Mr. Dugan had donated the right away for. And, and we, we proposed to just put, uh, a, a left turn lane improvement on a hundred and eighty third. And, and what we're finding out now, as, as recently back here as, as April, is that KDOT wants the full blown intersection improvements done to a hundred and eighty third, uh, not just a left turn lane. So we're trying to break the two projects a, a little bit apart so that we can, uh, we can proceed with the Goddard frontage road work, and then the, uh, hundred and eighty third improvements will proceed as its own project. So, um, I'm just gonna hit the high points here if that's okay, but on, on November, uh, nineteen twenty eighteen, uh, we submitted a project for the Goddard frontage road relocation. Um, that was a project up to six hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. Uh, it was, it was approved by KDOT, uh, on January third, twenty nineteen. And, uh, there was some, uh, additional right away required there off of Mr. Dugan, and so subsequent to that, a right away agreement, uh, was proposed, and the city did purchase, uh, some additional right away necessary, uh, to, to build the frontage road relocation project. Uh, and we actually proceeded on the design for that and actually some improvements on the hundred and eighty third and turned those plans into KDOT. I believe it was in August of twenty nineteen, so we were, we were trying to move forward that as quickly as we could with that. Um, but then, um, the, the R-CUT project, uh, started evolving and the design on that, and there was actually a traffic impact study done by Trans Systems who's doing the R-CUT design on Kellogg there. So, um, as recently, and there was a field, there was a field, uh, field check meeting, April seventeenth, twenty twenty, in which we went over some of these things with KDOT officials and Trans Systems on the R-CUT, and the issue of this, um, uh, hundred and eighty third street improvements came up. And due to, due to the, uh, traffic impact study done by Trans Systems, you know, they recommended what is shown on that map there for hundred and eighty third street improvements. Uh, a left turn southbound lane, a through southbound lane, and a right turn southbound lane, and then also a right turn lane for northbound traffic on the south side of the intersection. So up in the upper right hand corner, you can kinda see, I know it's kinda small, but, uh, the configuration of what was being proposed. And that, that was proposed based upon traffic estimated for the year twenty forty. Okay, so based upon that, KDOT saw the recommendation in the traffic in, impact study and said, you've got to do it according to this study, which is reflected in there, or you've got to demonstrate to us that what you plan to do with just a left turn lane will be adequate. And that was gonna require the city to go back through, uh, a new traffic study and have an extra expense. And ultimately, uh, the, uh, conclusion was drawn that, uh, just a left turn lane is not gonna pass the level of service typically required by KDOT for these traffic impact studies. So at that point, we started discussing, okay, can we just do, can we just not do the left turn lane? And on hundred and eighty third, just do the Goddard frontage road because the developer is, you know, still wanting us to move forward on that, he donated the right away. He's wanting us to move forward on that as quickly as possible. And, and, and so with a number of phone calls and meetings back and forth to KDOT, we finally, I think, got something figured out that will allow us to proceed. So, uh, and, and that's where we're at at this point, is that, uh, by amending the current corridor management project we have and pulling back about a hundred, uh, maybe a hun, a little over a hundred thousand dollars worth improvements out of that project that was put in there for the hundred and eighty third work, like, we'll pull that out, they will allow us to amend that project, and then we will submit a new application for corridor funds for the hundred and eighty third street improvements, the full blown hundred and eighty third street improvements, uh, as shown on that sketch, along with the traffic signal. The traffic signal's gonna have to be improved to coordinate with the R-CUT, uh, and timed with the R-CUT. So, uh, the idea here is, is we'll create another project, and I, and I have filled out that application and, and I shared it with Brian, and of course, I didn't bring it tonight, but, uh, the estimated cost for the additional project is a, a million seven eighty six three forty, that's on the second page here.
I could go to the next slide.
There, there's the, there's the additional right away that was acquired. Um, there's, okay, there's about, estimated cost for the additional project is a million seven eighty six, uh, and I think fifteen percent is required for the local contribution, so two hundred sixty seven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars would be the city Goddard's responsibility once we're awarded to this. Now, this project though, if awarded, wouldn't, wouldn't be set for construction until twenty twenty two. Okay, so this pro, that's, this, this, uh, amendment, first of all, would allow the frontage road relocation to proceed this year. The R-CUT's gonna happen in twenty twenty one, and then this project will happen in twenty twenty two. So that's kind of the chronology of what, uh, how, how this will proceed. So that's, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it, you have any questions at this point, and then I'll, I'll just go forward from there. Um, the financials.
Basically, they had a hundred eighty thousand that were gonna be pulled back?
Yeah, is that what it says somewhere, I didn't, is it, that would say, does that say that somewhere in here? Um.
Hundred and nine.
The, the original, the original approved amount was six hundred and fifty six thousand for that Goddard frontage road, and I think it was about, I don't, I don't have the actual amount, um, that, that would be pulled back for the amendment. But if, if, uh, I think, if, tonight you were to authorize that, I think we can get that final amount, cause we, we, we'd figured out just how much pavement, how much of this six hundred and fifty six with pavement improvements on a hundred and eighty third?
Is this the same three hundred thousand dollar design we've handled with R-CUT, or is that something different?
Uh, no, this will be, this will be in addition to the, uh, and also there'll be a, if this, if we get funding, um, then, um, there, there'd be a design contract, our, our, or Trans Systems would also be the designer of the hundred and eighty third street improvements, cause we thought it was important for that, especially the traffic signal to be coordinated with the R-CUT and the traffic signal timing and everything.
Can we throw a hundred and ninety nine there, or how can we talk about that now or before it gets too late?
Do that now, what?
Get a hundred and ninety nine in there too, so it talks to them as well.
Well, that should be, that should be, um, I'll have to check and see if that's not part of the R-CUT already, cause those signals from one eighty third and then the one signals for the R-CUT and the signal at one ninety nine will all have to be coordinated with each other and phased with each other. Because theoretically, the, the traffic should flow through there, as it leaves a hundred and eighty third, it should hit the, the, it hit, should hit a green at, uh, at the R-CUT at Barber, which is a half mile, and then be able to proceed and, and then, um, and then the phasing should be coordinated between that and one ninety nine.
At what point could we talk about twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four fixing one of those roads on a hundred and ninety nine, like, with access roads? Like, could we make that a next step, or is that how, if we were?
We, we could find out whether or not we could apply for, uh, like, uh, like the rehab of the north frontage road, which needs rehab. We know that needs rehab, you know, to see if that could be, it could be its own separate project. But, um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's always open, I think, I think once we were to get these, uh, get these through the process, uh, that, that, the program still accepts applications. So, uh, so anyway, that, that in a nutshell is a, is a bit of the, um, so the project cost on the, on the Kellogg frontage road will come down a little bit, uh, but then we will apply for a new corridor funding project for a million seven eighty six three forty. Okay, so, um.
So if we wait for all of them to be together, would it be cheaper or not? Are we costing more by separating it out or not, I guess?
Well, I, I think that the Goddard, the frontage road, the frontage road relocation project.
Right.
Um, I think it fits very well to be bid on its own, because I think we can get, uh, some smaller contractors interested in that, and, and correspondingly, we'll get some more attractive pricing, whereas if it's rolled in with the other, you're, I mean, it's gonna be a major concrete pavier that has to come in and do that, and quite honestly, I think some of the unit prices that KDOT receives for projects, um, are higher than what we can do on smaller projects. By making this a smaller project, I think I can get more contractors interested, and I think we'll get better unit prices.
So they have a limit of what they'll give us, and if we didn't save any money less than that, that's already saving us.
Right, right, yeah, this is just the upper limit, and, and if we, uh, if we save some money through the bid process, then, uh, of course, I think their contribution will go down too.
Yeah.
But our share, our fifteen percent share, or whatever it is, uh, will, will be figured on the actual bid price.
So that's what's figured on the share portion, that helps.
Right, right. Okay, so, uh, and, uh, Brian did share, I guess he did share in your packet, that, uh, these projects, um, the hundred, are included in the CIP. You know, there's, uh, I guess, two million one hundred ten dollars, two million one hundred ten, two, one hundred ten thousand two hundred dollars in the CIP for, for the, the hundred and eighty third street type project, so, uh. Any legal, I'm not aware there's any legal, we're going through the process right now of completing checklists that KDOT, uh, requires for, um, for the frontage road relocation, and the recommended actions, uh, are to authorize the staff to amend the hundred and eighty third street frontage road application, again, reducing, reducing the scope by taking a hundred and eighty thirds work out, and then also then to submit another, a new separate corridor fund application for the hundred and eighty third street, uh, intersection project request to KDOT. So, um, I think that's everything, you have the CIP, and then you have your recent, uh, uh, the approval letter, and, um, so, Sam, for any questions that you might have at this point?
I guess the only thing I, I seem frustrated with is like, I thought we already approved this like in January third, twenty nineteen. Did it, takes eighteen months to, after that gets approved, to where we're at now, or what?
Well, we, we, okay, we were working on the plans from January to August, and then we sent the plans into KDOT to be reviewed. Okay, and then, uh, you know, there were a number of things there, and then, and then this issue of the hundred and eighty third street improvements came up. That's what was confusing us, like, well, you know, we just wanna do it, we wanna do an interim improvement there because we know there's a problem there between now and when the actual full blown improvements could be done. And so we've kind of been bantering back and forth on that subject since then, and then, and then as a, uh, as of the result here in April, then it finally came down from the, from the, the department that's reviewing our plans, saying, you either, you either got to redo this study saying that just a left turn lane will be adequate, or you've got to do the requirements as shown in this study, which is the full three lanes for southbound and the northbound, and then the signal intersection. So we've been bantering back and forth, trying to figure out, you know, just what can we do, and ultimately it just came to, if you can't, if you can't, KDOT told us, if you can't, uh, present us with a study that shows the left turns adequate, then you've gotta do all this. And we don't, we don't have the money in this project to do the full blown hundred and eighty third improvements. So we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, and this, this is kind of where they, they came up with the resolution. So I think, yeah, if you'd, uh, we'd ask you that you would authorize staff then to proceed with amending the current frontage road project and then submitting a new application, so I'm sure, I, I assume we'd be bringing that application back, or, I don't, I don't know. With this authorization, could we go ahead and submit, cause I think Brian can sign those, those applications, so. With that authorization, we'd just go ahead and I think submit that hundred and eighty third street application to KDOT.
Any other questions?
I don't think we need to move on, because if you've seen the backups on the ball, Brian, once you're past couple of days, you know, we need something to do something. So I made that motion.
I'll second. Okay, first by Larry, second by Michael, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Same thing, thank you, Harley.
Item H five, water and sewer utility.
Item H five, water and sewer utility budget presentation.
Okay, so we are officially into budget season. Between now and the second meeting in July, we will present all of our, uh, sexually required, uh, funds that we require adopting a operating budget for. We start off like we always do with the water sewer funds. The, what, what we're going to present tonight is going to include about a fifteen percent loss in revenue for the rest of this operating year. I'm not anticipating any much and I'm being very, I think, conservative there. I don't think we're going to lose that much, but just for the sake of being on the safe side. Also, but I'm not anticipating any, any loss of revenue going forward into the budget year. Sorry, department goals, the water fund, uh, this, this is sort of just a, condensed what I gave you in the packet, which is the actual budget pages that we go into the official budget book that we'll publish this year. Provide safer level water, highest level of internal external customer service and maintain the water system effectively and efficiently. Constantly applying new technologies to meet the proper standards of the municipal fossil banner. Uh, major challenges facing the water fund, uh, maintaining the system as a structure changes. Evaluation repair, uh, elevation of, of the water tower. We've done a lot of good work on the water tower in the last couple of years, including that paint job, which I think the entire city was overjoyed to see what happened. Only for the future, developing secondary wellfields, um, and building a catch balance of the utility. Uh, so revenue forecast, um, I'm going to break it down by individual line I was here. It's a little bit, we, but the way we budget, the actual budget, uh, year is, you see here, we just have a total for in-city and out-of-city customers. That includes, both of those numbers include residential and non-residential customers. When we're doing the estimate for the current year, I always break out the debt service for the storage tank and the supply line, the debt service for the storage tank. We transfer into bond and interest fund because, uh, we, that, the storage tank was paid for with, uh, a geo bond included another, uh, another issuance, another project was included in that issuance. And then the debt service, the supply line, that's paid directly through the water, uh, fund is directly to, uh, KDOT. Administration, this is a breakdown of our lab and, uh, our personnel service costs. Include salary, uh, vacations, sick leave, positive work salaries, uh, overtime, which is, we have overtime work for our public works employees. They're included here. Pretty, we're figuring outside of normal operating hours and, um, for water, they have like the exact rate and things like that. We've got insurance, social security, uh, our capers, which is, uh, can't, point, tie in the system. Work comp unemployment, our flexible spending, uh, program, fees of administration and our bonus program. I'm not going to go through each individual line because I'll be around like we do. But this is our contractuals. These are, these are basically any services that we pay for that are utilized by the water system. No real changes going from last year to this year. We have some increased costs for, I'm going to point out something earlier. It was like software support, um, and then, uh, printing costs have gone up a little bit for, we, we, for bills, we print, have sales or we do that out of, um, out of, outside the, of our operations. Uh, commodities, we have additional, we have additional costs for, uh, based on our, our maintenance program for, uh, equipment replacement for, uh, computers, uh, we're paying more this year. Also, uh, we have higher costs for, uh, just office supply, software. These are based on the, uh, uh, you know, as we continue to upgrade, uh, software across the board, we, we see increased costs throughout the city. At that top there is for non-operating expense. We have a little bit, um, you know, we, we collect sales tax on water sales and we remit those to the states. That, that's expenditure. And then bottom there is just the overall for the administration cost center. Transmission, this is our, these are operations within water, uh, that basically is everything from the wells to the, um, tower. We're adopting slightly two hundred and eighty dollars less than we'll be adopting last year. This, that we did based on spending the prior year and expenditures today. Commodities, again, these things we physically purchased for five hundred dollars or two hundred dollars more than we did last year. So basically it's flat. Again, we have, uh, we pay a little bit of real estate tax on some of the land we own, which is safe. Treatment, this is basically everything from the, our organization through the, uh, tower and out to our customers. Contractuals and commodities, again, this is much smaller than our transmission budget. Got nine hundred dollars more overall than we spent last year. The debt service is always the same. This is the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars we paid. We pay to KDOT, it's our debt service on the sixty, the supply line. And transfers again, the top one to bond interest fund, that's through the debt service on the water storage tank. And we also transfer some money to reserve, the water reserve out, uh, operating possibly part. Please stop me eight times. I'm already getting bored. So. Uh, so this is just overall, uh, total venture for one. We do sewer next. Again, um, major challenges, uh, we're actually doing a great job with our group, as mentioned several times, about our, meaning our A and E key permit requirements. Again, we have many infrastructure, we're trying to maintain and, uh, building fund balance to improve op, the operating position. We've done a great job of that. Fund balance, why, we're doing good. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to show you later that we're, I'm going to propose transfer additional funds into reserves. So, you know, we have more, we have a better, uh, fund balance and sewer replace reserve too. So we can start on some.
Joe Turner doesn't work anymore. He's on your sheet.
We have, okay. We have a schedule for replacement of electric pumps and stuff as far as.
We have, uh, we have some, uh, we have a, it's, it, I think Brooke's currently working on it. We have a basically a maintenance repair list for, scheduled for the plant. And we're expanding that out to deal with stuff like that. But again, the issue that we've had is that, you know, when we, some of those things have come up, we haven't really had specific sewer money set aside for it necessarily. So we've been, dipped into capital funds and equipment replacement reserve funds in the past. But I'm trying to get more money moved into sewer replacement reserve. So we have those. And for a while, we weren't, for several years, we didn't transfer anything and we started transferring it this year. So we started to get some maintenance projects and things like that going. But, um, but yeah, we're, we're, you know, we're, that's kind of been the goal since Brooke started is, one of his big goals has been to, you know, put in place schedules for replacement of equipment. Includes fleet and heavy equipment as well. So as we have been putting money aside into our reserves, we're actually going to have a better plan for, you know, paying for that stuff. Uh, revenue forecast for sewer fund, um, it's on pace with, uh, what it has been, uh, with, and again, one more thing I want to mention is, you know, we, we, I brought it to you last year. We actually talked about very budget last year as well, of renewing the rate structure. Whenever you're ready to look at it again, I'll bring back my proposal that I brought in last year and we talked about it. Uh, I believe there were, last year there were some concerns about too much, uh, going on to usage. So we'll take a look at those numbers again. It may be something you're more comfortable with. But I, you know, whether or not we approve that or maintain the rate structure we have now, this budget is going to reflect both. Because while we're going to redo the rate structure, it's not going to change revenue. So.
Something I wanted to interject since we're talking about like fixing things. Reach Road, I've always talked about and other people that live north of Reach Road. What's there thirteen houses north of, on Reach Road, north of Kellogg? Like we have thirteen services that aren't in the city. And I'm just thinking, if you've got a big pipe that runs under Kellogg and that happens, we're never going to break even on supply and service to those people. So that's something I think as a city, we probably should talk about it, banning that service.
Didn't we sell it off to Wichita, Reach, Reach Edition?
We were in negotiation of getting rid of those things.
Cause I, I, cause that worries me that anything comes up, it's going to take money that we need to, for our, you know, infrastructure.
All we're getting is the water out of that sewer.
So I don't know. That's something we should just put on an agenda item later or let you guys know. I've been talking about, I'd like to keep moving forward just because I don't want to get too late, something go wrong.
I would just say reach out to Brian and then we could draft it. I think he's been talking with.
Cause it's only like thirteen services, wasn't it?
Okay. I think we also have some services out south of it before that.
Yeah, I mean, really any of it's on the city and if you can hook up to Wichita, you might as well go. And I know they've got that water sewer line going right by the trail, basically right, right next to us. Thank you. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, um, I'm going to start off this little faster. Uh, this is our administration personnel costs. Our, we, we, if you look at the bottom here, where we have an actual twenty nineteen adopted for twenty twenty, estimate for twenty twenty and proposed for twenty twenty-one, you'll see that that number is very low. Much lower in twenty nineteen than what we adopted for this year. And that's because we have had, we, we currently have a vacant position in sewer. And also we have, we have changed how we're, uh, coding certain employees within public works where more, more of their salaries being charged at the sewer than it is to the other public works departments.
Trying to separate, like get crews, right?
Yeah, but basically we've got two employees that are, their salary is paid one hundred percent after sewer rather than the other two.
So do we have nine employees or seven or sixteen? Cause water said seven.
We have eight, including myself. We have positions, one position open. So generally we would have eight plus myself.
Okay.
And that's another thing too.
Okay, cause water said you have seven full-time employees and sewer said you have nine full-time employees, which would technically equal six to them. So I was confused.
Eight full timers plus myself.
Yeah, but two people, we have two employees that are only, that are only at sewer. That's, I think currently that's.
So it should be two or five point five and six point five.
It should be, so public works are, with, with the exception of Aaron and Mike, are one-third water, one-third sewer, one-third street. So I know I have it as three employees, but for it, the, the way these go together to the budget book, it makes more sense to show it to you separately, but the GFOA does think differently. I make the budget book for the GFOA. So it's, you know, we have nine public works employees, two of them are specifically sewer. So anyway, and also Brooke, Brooke's position was, is also, uh, included here where it had not been, uh, in previous budgets. Cause I don't know if you remember, but we used to, essentially that, his position at one point was paid for from four different funds. Sounds like they formed three different funds. So that, again, the reason for us here. Administration, not much change in, uh, budget versus last year in either, uh, commodities or in, uh, contractuals. Overall, it's about a fifty thousand dollar increase from last year's budget. Again, that's mostly in personal costs. Collection, this is, uh, basically everything until it gets to the treatment plant and the system. Then, uh, cost center, it's basically the treatment facility, um, which basically flat like contractuals, um, and commodities.
Why are you overdoing on health insurance?
Well, so again, it's all overdoing it, but we always, we always adopted additional, additional family plan in case like somebody gets married, has kids. And also again, we've got more, we got, uh, we, we have had changes. I'm pretty sure we have one employee that just got married. He'll be going from a single plan to a, a single spouse.
I see. So you're like at about twenty thousand or about.
Uh, this is a list of what's on, uh, on the schedule of your place in twenty-one for women in the treatment plant. I'll leave Dr. Brooke to say whether, how updated this is. This is the one I had that had the schedule for this year. So I don't think you're working on, although I know that you're doing it right now. Debt service, so twenty twenty-one will be the first year we don't have any, the, about thirty-five thousand we pay every year for the, the business. Those are going to be paid off this year. And so you can see we've got separated by the wastewater treatment, uh, plant debt. So that's up to about five hundred thousand dollars a year. And here's the bill which drops off, uh, drops off after twenty twenty. You see, we've got about, uh, at the end of the budget year, we'll have about three point seven billion, three point eight billion left on the, uh, wastewater treatment plant, which pays off in twenty twenty-nine. We will have one more series of, uh, uh, another balloon increase in debt service. Looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, we have another ninety thousand dollars a year we'll be paying again.
I got a question. Um, with all the subdivisions planned and all the households, are we at capacity in there?
No, not really.
We're overdoing it even at that point.
Oh, you, you don't think we'll, we'll be fine?
Twenty-nine, I think, don't you, Harley?
Yes. That's why, hopefully enough about a few years of just being able to.
I hope we're running that plant in a portion of the capacity.
And that's sort of doing a little bit more.
So, thank you.
Okay, and, um, so the only change for transfers going into the budget year, wanted to double the transfer to the food reserve fund, uh, double the transfer of capital improvement fund and add about eighty thousand dollars to the transfer to sewer reserves. At sewer reserve, you know, we've done a great job of, uh, maintaining what was at before we used, uh, before we have actually started transferring money back in, we're probably using up those funds too. And Brooke, you know, including capital budget was the, uh, the main display of, uh, maybe Brooke had brought you. So we want to do more things like that. So we're going to, we'd like to put additional funds in there. I want to double that all the way to thirty thousand dollars by next year. And this is overall, uh, overall expenditure proposed for the budget. And so like I was telling, uh, Hunter before the meeting started, uh, we'll do these budget workshops over the next, uh, three meetings. We'll do, we're doing water sewer today. We will go over our, uh, special revenue funds at the next meeting, which will include the street fund, parks and rec fund, et cetera, et cetera. And then the meeting that, the meeting that we, uh, show you the general fund budget will also have, uh, the bond and interest fund. So all the, all the tax levy funds, you really have bond interest and library fund. With, and at that point, we'll have the valuations for the year. We'll see how much we could, valuation gone up, which we use to establish what the levy will be based on our, based on the new levy we want to adopt. So we'll ask if there's anything you guys want to add or take away from this. We'll have time to do that before our final, uh, we set the public hearing, which will be at the July sixth to eighth.
The only thing I would like to add would be that water meter replacement program.
Yeah, we're doing that through, we're, we're doing that through, uh, essentially the capital improvement program. And that would be used, we're, we're using water reserve money for that, which is not budgeted.
I just want to be aggressive enough where we're going to replace all the meters before they need to be replaced.
Right. What was, what was your timeline?
Well, it's, it's quite a long timeline to be honest. It'll be probably six to eight years to replace all of them because we've got census meters that are in the ground that are relatively new.
And what's the life of a meter? Ten years?
Uh, approximately ten years, but we do have, um, a, a number of meters that need replacing. And that's something I'll talk with Matt and Brian about and send together, bring to council at the time, right?
But we've got sufficient fund balance in, uh, water reserve and we're transferring it up into water reserve every year. We're, we're even more than able to accommodate the, whatever requirements are proposing for replacement. So next meeting, we'll do the, uh, special revenue funds.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, guys.
Item H six, presentation from the Goddard Public Library. Thanks for coming, guys, sticking around.
Thank you. Um, thanks for allowing us to present to you this evening. Uh, I mean, I'm just curious. Um, my name is Lisa Coyne, for those of you that I don't know. Um, I've been a member of the Goddard Public Library Board for about a year now. And I'm sure you know April, our library director. And so really what I wanted to do.
Basically.
In general, I want to just highlight for you some of the new initiatives that have taken place, um, at the library in the last year. So I'm not going to read all of these to you because you can read, um, but I do want to hit some of the, um, some of the major ones. So first of all, a number of new digital resources have been added. By far, the most popular are the digital reading applications. Um, related to this also is the Bean Stack application, um, which allows people to keep track of reading goals and progress. You can also see if you look further down that we've added several digital resources that appeal to the teenage demographic, including Kindles, a Nintendo Switch, and an Oculus Go VR headset. Very exciting. In addition to this, in the last year, the library has worked to reach out and form relationships within the community. We have partnered with USD two-six-five to supplement pre-K programs with storytime and additional book choices. And we've also worked to build trust and relationships with several local businesses who have agreed to sponsor some library activities. A little over a year ago, with the help of Wichita State University, the library formed a multi-year strategic plan. And most of the goals in that plan have already been accomplished. In the last year, we have formed the Library Friends and Foundation, and we have received 503 status, providing evidence of the library's desire to supplement its budget. We've hired a part-time staff member dedicated only to programming and outreach. In an effort to make our current space more inviting and with the help of the Goddard Women's Club and several community members, we also remodeled our children's room. And most recently, we developed and implemented an annual survey to discover the most relevant needs of the library patrons. So this table indicates some of the growth our library has experienced just in the last year. You can see that our checkout numbers remain strong and consistent. Library attendance, use of computers, and interlibrary loans are on the rise, proving that Goddard Public Library is meeting the need of connecting community members to a wide variety of resources. So here's a closer look at some of those increases. If you look at the percentages, um, first one that caught my attention is the third from the bottom. I actually asked if that was a typo. Um, it's not. Um, there's a huge increase in interlibrary loans, and that is due to the formation of the Can Share Consortium, which actually allows us to share and receive materials from libraries in several neighboring communities. So, um, that's been hugely popular and allowed us to provide exponentially more resources to.
There's over three hundred and fifty thousand items in the consortium available through the consortium, so.
And you can also see a significant increase in library attendance and programs offered. A hundred and seventy-two percent increase in programs offered over a quarter one last year. Yes. So this is stretching our building capacity to its limit. Um, great things are happening at the library and the community is really coming out in support. So, uh, the last thing I want to cover with you is just the, our goals for this, this coming year. Um, we would like to create and place at least four story walks in the area, in the community. Continue to increase community partnerships, including one with Kansas Workforce, which allows us to connect the jobless people in our area with viable employment options. Acquire a book mobile for outreach programming and pop-up events. Participate in therapy dog programs. Develop a mid-grade, which is like pre-teen advisory board. Provide enticing programming for adults. And then finally, partner with local colleges for satellite marketing. So I'm going to turn it over to April at this point. Let her speak more to us. Do you want this, if you want to?
Thanks for letting us come to talk to you guys. Um, so we're going to, going to talk a little about, about the commitment that the ci, city has shown to growing the library. So we funded a large portion of the library's strategic plan. Um, and with that, like she said, we've met those goals, those, that was set through twenty twenty-two, and we are done basically with that. We have one thing we need to talk to the colleges about, I think that's the only goal that we haven't really gotten to yet. Um, so we're working on putting new strategies, plugging new strategies into that existing framework. So we'll still be using the same strategic plan and framework, but, um, changing some of those goals. Um, another goal the city supported was hiring a director with an NLS, Master of Library Science degree, and then public library experience. And this goal has been accomplished and it has paid off with benefits toward making the library an important entity to the growing community. Um, however, without a commitment to also grow the library's budget, um, it's going to be hard for us to sustain what we've done in the last year and to increase that. Um, because we don't have, we need to increase programming outreach and we don't have the money to hire more staff and continue to grow. It's just, we just don't have it in the budget we have. So, um, right now, the city is providing the three mills, which is actually two point nine six eight mills, um, plus twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and I know that Lisa Dotson shared with me that the mayor had proposed at the December seventeen, twenty eighteen city council meeting that the city, uh, might provide another twenty-five thousand for programming after the new director started. Um, with these additions to the budget, the library would be receiving a little over four mills. Um, I also know that the Friends and Foundation will see as a way for us to get more funding, um, which we've gotten that up and going, but it takes a while for an organization to get off the ground and actually have funds to provide, um, to us. So, and, so we're still trying to get that going to where we have enough, um, commitment from others to do that. But, you know, large amounts of funding, um, from individuals and group funders are not going to be provided without a timeline and a commitment from the city and the library, so, um, to those specific funding goals. But the library and the Friends are, we're initially working on looking at grants. Um, you'll see a little bit that we've got, we've gotten almost twelve thousand dollars in grants in the last year. Uh, but the grant, um, grants and foundation funding is only intended to supplement the library. It's not there to provide for the general cost and expense of operating an urban public library, which is what the statute is for, that's what the city is to provide, so. Um, in this time of uncertainty, job loss and hardship is more important than ever that we fund the library appropriately. We are where the community members will come when they need to fill out job applications, applications for unemployment, and other benefits, and to attend free programs for their children. We are the only amenity in town where we can come for free. We don't ask you to pay for something. You can get a book, you can get a movie, you can do a program, and we aren't asking you to pay for any of that. With a seventeen to eighteen percent unemployment rate, the library will be integral to community members as they work to reenter the job force. Our outreach and summer reading program are also immensely important this year as it will help keep schoolchildren from suffering, suffering horrible loss that was started when they had to come and leave school early, so that's going to be an impact. Libraries are one of the only places families and individuals can go for free programming and services. That is one of the reasons that libraries draw people to the community. They are necessary and important amenity to many, including the five thousand four hundred and sixty-seven registered car holders at the Goddard Public Library. Studies have shown that libraries actually add monetary value to a community by increasing housing values of homes that are located within a fourth to a half mile of the library. This also generates more property tax revenue. Since the city is already providing an additional twenty-five thousand and intended to discuss providing another twenty-five thousand, we're here kind of asking for a two mil increase in funding. Um, this allows the library to continue moving forward, making it an indispensable part of the community. It also supports the city's previous investment in the library. Unless community members know that amenities are important, then we'll be supportive. So this is, these are the grants that we have received. Sickles is a South Central Kansas library system. PLA is Pellet Library Association, um, and that is an internship program that is put on hold until twenty twenty-one. Um, then, so those are what we've gotten. Um, most of those are two specific things, um, that we have to actually spend that money on, that stuff, but that's not bad for a year kind of thing. So, and we do have, we are applying for, um, compares at grants too. Um, we have one in for fifteen thousand dollars right now, and we're going to send another one in that hopefully will pay for the, the whole thing. So, um, and then we're going to do cost communication grant because they actually have a, one for smaller technologies, so we'll do more technology. So I've provided the, um, library comparisons budget. So basically, these are mainly libraries our size all across the state. The green arrows are showing communities that are growing. The red arrows are showing communities that are losing, um, population. And as you can see, most of, all of them have bigger budgets than we do. Um, Park City is the one that is most relevant, I think, just because they have three mills, but obviously their mills are higher. Uh, but their circulation is eleven thousand less than us. So we're busier than they are, even in programming, because I know they don't do as much programming as we do. They have over four full-time staff equivalents while we have three. So, um, basically, the shows were busy and thriving and understaffed and underfunded. Um, so we're kind of here tonight to kind of see where we can go with the city's future commitment. What we're basically asking for is more funding. And we're asking to put on the agenda for budget so that we can present our own budget every year. Um, it's like. I think we should write it, I mean, the library board and the director should write it and present it every year. Um, and then if we can get that twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, put into a mill or three somehow, instead of me sending those over.
Yeah.
That gets to me, I think, but anyway. Um, those are what we're kind of asking for, and we had, and. Okay, so, um, I have also provided, okay, so, the term of general opinion in the League of Kansas Municipalities Advisor, City Grant Library Board Funding Request. And so that's what we're asking for. And in order for the library in Goddard to continue to move forward, the council should also consider a bond issuer CID for new facilities, which we would love to pair with the, um, community center, because it's the other building that really needs. And that way, we can share space, you know, kitchen and big areas that we can block off and stuff like that, so that would be great. But libraries have, obviously, we have different needs in buildings. We need meeting and study rooms, divided areas for children, teens, and adults, and actual space for programming, and a bigger area for computers. We need a facility that is specifically designated to be a library because libraries have need of unique spaces. And that was in our annual survey, which I've already told you guys, was the big thing. Everybody says we need more space. And we've, uh, we've looked into remodeling and that isn't really, I mean, two hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars to remodel that building. It's not, we, it's something like that.
Yeah.
Kind of money, so. Um, and two fifty would just be for adding a room where the drive-through is. So, anyway, that's what we, thank you for doing this.
Well, thank you so much, we appreciate the.
I do.
Um, Matt, how does it go forward on the mill increase or any kind of funding? How does that work? Because I know that HSL is involved, and we have to go to vote to increase the mills here, or how does that work?
Library, library, um, library debt service, if it's for specific projects, or like, if we had, if we had a specific project we were going to finance that we needed additional mills for, that we weren't getting like, you know, see, I can hear what, uh, special for, we're just going to lock it out on our own, we could levy for that.
Can we vote just to increase the mill to five without a public vote?
We would present that with, uh, we would present the, uh, general fund and bond interest fund. Basically, when we do, we accept public hearing, we would, we would present if you guys want.
I guess, so, do you have to send a public hearing?
No.
It's part of the.
That's for the year budget.
This is up to you guys, honestly. Do you support two mill increase because we won't put Matt's over there?
The problem, the question is, uh, the citizens of Goddard want to pay more money.
Right.
That's the question.
Well, that's, they wouldn't be paying more.
Do they want to pay two more mills for a library?
They're not going to pay two more mills for a library because we, we are exempted from your cap. So you don't, they don't, I mean, basically.
No, they'll, they'll, we're, we're, we're levying two more mills on them, yeah.
Yes.
So they'll, they'll, they're paying it.
I think.
It does not go against our tax lit requirement, so we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to get their vote to approve it.
I mean, that's, that's going to be the general public. Are they, are they wanting?
Do they want free programs and people who are helping?
A bigger, better library, you're going to pay two more mills to have it or not?
But we're not going to get a bigger, better library yet. It would just be for, for us to actually provide services and continue to provide the services we're providing now.
If I was going to guess, I would say two mills would add.
Three mills would be a hundred and seventy-five, so.
Well, I'm guessing, like, I'm guessing.
About ninety-eight thousand, right?
Uh-huh.
How, two mills would buy what, ninety-eight?
I would, I'm guessing it's going to be about ninety to ninety-two percent. I don't know what our, our valuation increase is going to be, but based on five percent, it would be about ninety thousand, ninety-one, six or something like that. Which is there, I think last year we gave, or last year the, so last year the, the last year the levy was a.
Well, we're down about two for, oh, two mills.
Two mills? Give me a second, Larry. And we would.
I guess while, while Matt's doing the, uh.
No, it would cut out of there for a moment, so it wouldn't affect us.
While Matt's doing the math, I want to ask a general question to the public. Would you guys be willing to pay two mills for adding more to the library?
Absolutely. Yes.
It's why we've got a full house tonight.
Well, what about you guys, they spoke?
I'd be paying three mills for a library.
He wants three.
He's already paying three. He wants two more.
He wants two more. He'll do five, watch print.
Huh?
You'll do five, watch print.
Well, I'm going to. So, Matt, I think.
So how, 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 what, what cost, what, what price of the house, first of all?
We'll just base it on the.
I'd say I'd, I'd say I'd, I'd say I'd, but I have to save money for a sign.
There's no one hundred thousand more houses in Goddard.
Well, according to this.
Make sure Larry.
Yeah, make sure.
Yeah.
Forty-six dollars. Forty-six dollars a year.
On a two hundred thousand dollars? Yeah.
Well, what I'm saying is people are complaining about they don't have money to pay a water bill.
Yeah, but where do they come when they need to fill out that, those forms for their benefits to come to us? Because we have, because if they can't pay for their water, they can't pay for their internet either.
It's a nice free service people use it too.
What's the percentage of people coming to you?
Hey, I just like the idea that the community center is going to be there someday.
And I'm all for that. I love to share space. I love sharing.
What's the percentage of people going to the library to fill out applications or anything like that?
We don't probably have that specific data, especially right now since we're shut down, it spins a little bit lax. But now we are doing five appointments, so. We actually had a guy come in today who had to use our computer because his went down and it was for his business to get his stuff, he does stuff on Mondays, his billing, I think, it's, we're going to do that today, so. So then you come in and we do help when they need, and we, we, I mean, usually at least once a week, we've got somebody in there trying to get a job. And that was fully closed down. Now that we're at seventy, eighteen percent, you know, unemployment, that's going to be raised, so.
And then what about, when we do community center, CID, how, how do we start that whole conversation? Because even if it's not going to happen for three or five years, I think we should start the conversation out from the beginning, but.
Yeah, um.
What do we do to move forward? Are you guys on board or something like that?
If the mayor would mind reaching out to Commissioner Dennis again to discuss their plans for, uh, senior center or whatever, we could, uh, tap on that, that'd be great. Um, we could start looking at, um, other types of grants, but I'm, but I'll be positive that's the best path forward for that. But again, it's just, you know, my thought for the library would be however the school board figured out to get their bond process. You guys need to do that, I mean, because they, it was seamless, you know? They, they put the project together, they got the estimates, which we don't know, have any clue of anything, what anything's going to cost. And, you know, I think they had to pay initially for the architecture firm for, you know, the planning, but I think that's the route we need to go and, and get our, our voters, I think, involved and engaged in a whole strategic plan and raise the mill to pay for a community center like that. And I, I, it's not, I, I think it's more, you know, getting the word out too and letting people know that it's a good thing and this is why you should want it. I think even have yourselves in the community, it's going to be a better return than just make, you know, deciding for them. I mean, that's what I would like to see too, maybe, I don't know.
Well, I would want to proceed with, you know, having the public on board with it.
What's that?
I think the public needs to be on.
Yeah, I, well, that's what I, on the, on the whole center, but I mean, you know, the two mills, we could make that decision here if you guys wanted to. But I think moving forward too, this is just to give them some more money now for off.
But I think moving forward, too, this is just to give them some more money now for operating costs, but I think we still need to keep the conversation, but I like the idea of getting, you know, we're doing the community center and library combination.
That's my mom.
We need to see where our budget is right now. I mean, we're ready to put a new budget in and see where we're at, see what we're going to afford to do.
Yeah.
Mayor, do you remember when we had a meeting and your son was there?
Uh-huh.
And he was the one who presented that idea of having a bookmobile?
Yeah.
And having a place to cross that highway, because right now it's super dangerous.
Yeah.
Even though you see kids all the time crossing. And he was there, and I remember thinking, wow, that's awesome that he was putting that in for them. But you, as well, thought that was a very good idea, like, stop at Walmart, like, the parents could shop at Walmart and bust their kids under the library.
If they had extra money, they can do stuff.
That's been, what, a couple of years from at least?
Well, and having a bookmobile, we can actually do, you know, we're coming out to the states for going to medical, like, going to schools. Well, Carrie has to put everything in and out of her car or her van every single time. And so, that takes time, and, and if we had something dedicated, we could do more programming out in the community. Use the parks, use the schools, use, you know, pathways, you know, parking lot, stuff like that. I mean, we could be out all the time, so.
I think it's something to consider, I don't know if you guys, how, would we talk about a two-mill increase in the next budget cycle, or do we...
No, what, what we would do is we would just, when we present the, basically, when we, when we present the final night of the budget, we would increase the mill for the library, too. We would create, so, like, so, you said earlier about it was actually...
That's what says in San Francisco County, two point nine six eight.
Yeah, so, the reason it's not flat three is because the mills are, when we, when we put, when we plug that information into the forms that show us basically what the levy is going to be on those mills, it's based off of the valuation estimates that we get from the county, and they're never right on. So, whatever we adopt during the actual budget, it's never going to be that exact numeral. It's going to be relatively close, but it's not going to be that exact number.
So, there's a dollar amount, though, is your credit, right?
Well, yeah, the dollar amount is what, what you levy, but that's not necessarily going to be what the exact mill rate is, so. So, it's like, it's like any other, you know, tax rate. This, that, our mill levy is based on property valuations, and they're constantly fluctuating. So, they're never going to be exactly, the rate is never going to be exactly what it says, so.
Do you guys have any question on that, or is that something you think you would support moving forward? When does the two-mill...
Totally supportive.
Two-mill increase? When does that, I guess, go in place?
All forward. It would be, it would, it would be adopted in, we'll, you would adopt that in the second week of July, which means it would be on the tax bills that go out for the first, the second half of twenty twenties. It'll be on those tax bills going out, the second half of twenty twenty. So, we would get it in January. We would get the first, the first payments in January, based on that.
Does that, does that mean now that we can cut back our contribution after they get those mill levies?
Yeah, I don't know if we get to do the extra twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, that would just go off.
Right.
We would just be getting...
That's what they prefer, too. That way, they get their money, they can deal with it, not to wait for us to give it to them.
That's easy said, but it's usually, usually after it's said, usually somebody's standing in front of us wanting more money a year down the road.
However, they would not increase the library budget for very many reasons.
Do we, I, do we think it is conservative to be raising the mill levy right now while people can't pay their utility bills?
People have to come somewhere for air conditioning. That would be the library.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, we, I think, I'm, I'm, I don't, I think two is...
We've got to look at, obviously, there's many supporters of the library in here, but when we're thinking about the total community, we've had a substantial increase in people not being able to pay their utility bills.
Yeah, I guess, I think they're just not paying them, though. I mean, I'd like to really know that.
Well, I, I, we don't know the circumstances.
I think they've got this.
If, if we want to, if we want to increase, why shouldn't we be able to waive, or we could waive?
Because that would put us in the twenty-twenty-two before we...
Well, we'll know much in that, but we would know if these people are being affected or not. And we might even know if the economy is doing better. We don't know how the whole coronavirus is going to be affecting the economy now.
I don't know even Goddard's...
If you were already funding the library where it should be, you wouldn't be having to do this now.
And forty-six dollars a year is not...
Shouldn't break you.
Yeah.
On a two hundred thousand more house.
Most people were complaining about five-dollar increase on the water bill.
At six percent...
People just like to, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the water bill's high.
Hey, Good Medicine Lodge is ninety-seven dollars.
I'm having a hard time trying to...
But that is where those people, we are where those people are going to come. So, when I tell them, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have the staff to help you.
The underprivileged people says she's going to be helping.
I understand, but you're saying you have the percentage of people coming in to get the...
Because they've been closed.
Well, and if, if you look at our statistics for the year, how many people came in? I don't know how many of those are underprivileged, but most of those kids that we have in, in there after school, do not have parents at home, are starving, so we're feeding them after school because they don't have food at their house. So, I know that we have, that we're serving those people, because I see them every day after school when school was in. And so, I see them every day during the summer when we're open. We're the ones who are going to be feeding them.
Well, what we're saying now, though, is that you're feeding them, and now we're going to charge them forty dollars more a year.
I'm not charging the kids.
The bookmobile, that's never...
Probably a renter's.
The bookmobile.
The bookmobile is either going to be paid for with a grant and with us partnering with people to pay for insurance, because that's what we're having to do right now, and that's not going to stop. Just because you give us two more mills, we're still going to have to go for grants. We're still going to have to partner with people in the community because we're still going to need more money. I mean, that's not going to get rid of our money issues anytime soon. I'm just trying to do what I was hired to do, which was grow the library coming here. We're going to be at five thousand people. I have a budget of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year. In Medicine Lodge, I had nineteen hundred people, and I had a budget of a hundred and twenty-four thousand a year. I mean, I can't do what I'm doing, I can't continue to do what I'm doing on the amount of money that I'm given. I can't increase, I can't grow with the community. The community is growing. I can't continue and grow with them if I don't have any funds.
And I think Goddard needs to have a first-class library or better than what it is now. That's why I said, I, I feel like, I wish we'd get some carpet and clean it up because it looks pretty ratty now, the carpet, the, the twigs seams.
I will just say, we did a kind of an internal study, and I think we're third or fourth in the metro as far as the percentage of mills we actually give to the library.
However, that is still not comparable to the rest of them.
Correct, but a lot of these other cities are, their mills, like, total mill levies are well over forty, so.
Yeah, they are. They are huge.
Our mill levies are relatively...
I got laughed at because when I said we have three mills, and, oh, we get three mills? And I said, yeah, but ours, what our mill rate was, and they were like, huh.
Yeah, we, our mills don't make as much money, yes.
Yeah.
And, and the only argument from doing it right now is because we would run until maybe later, running into twenty twenty-one, right?
Well, if you don't set the budget now, we will get it.
Yeah, I know, that's the point. But if we, if we gave it time, we would understand the economic impact...
There's always going to be something coming up.
That our community is in right now.
But there's always going to be something coming up. There's always some disaster. I mean, there's always something...
A global pandemic doesn't happen every year.
No, you only have about a hundred years. But not that, I mean, and not that we haven't had little ones, because we had one in two thousand eight that wasn't awesome either, so. You know, there's always something out there that's going to be a reason to not look at doing this. And so, I think it just needs to be seriously considered because it's important, it's important to the community. We have a lot of people, and we don't just serve inside Goddard, we serve outside Goddard. But, you know, the school district is sixty-six square miles. If we just served the school district, that's a lot of miles, so.
I think we can look this over in our budget and see what our budget's going to be this year when we're going through the total budget, see where we're at.
I think we'd better...
Just, just in case we have to raise the city mill levy just to make our bills. So, I need to see where we're at before we agree to raising the library mill levy on top of that because we don't know what our city's going to end up having to do with their budget.
No, I think it's a great presentation. I think it's just on time and gets us in the communication with it. I, I kind of like to see things, to see, we like to see things a couple, three times before we make our decisions, so.
We should have an idea of where, where we're going to be, where, where we will stand by, hopefully this week, as far as, well. We will, we will know how much revenue loss and property tax we've had for, if there has been an impact from this so far. We'll have an idea that this week we get the evaluation notices, but...
Well, I mean, we've got your information. I think we've started the conversation more better, I think, than we were before, and trying to let you get, get control of your own budget, I think, is what you're wanting. So, I think we're on the right, right way, and that way you can expand your funding and your, and your programming, too. So, I, I appreciate what you've done at the library.